I'd like to call to order this meeting of the School Board of Independent School District 624. I'd ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Strifogi?
Here.
Thompson, here. Arcand?
Here.
Boyd?
Here.
Daniels?
Here.
Ellison?
Here.
Newmaster?
Here.
Thank you. I would ask everyone to please rise, remove your hats for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on a nation under a indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
We have before us an agenda. If I could get a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
A motion by Dr. Newmaster.
And a second?
Second. By Ms. Boyd. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, and the motion passes. We also have in front of us a consent agenda, which includes the various items of business that come before us every month, including donations. Our community is very generous to our district and our students and teachers, and this month is the same. So thank you very much to our community for your donations. If I could get a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
A motion by Ms. Daniels and a second?
Second.
A second by Ms. Boyd. Any discussion? This will require a roll call vote. I would ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Strifogi?
Aye.
Thompson, aye. Arcand?
Aye.
Boyd? Daniels?
Aye.
Ellison?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Thank you, and the motion passes. It is now time for the public forum portion of the meeting. There were no requests submitted to speak. We will now move into our informational items. The first one is C1, Student Recognition. Dr. Kazmicek.
Thank you Chair Ellison, members of the board. Our student recognition video tonight honored students who represented White Bear Lake Area Schools, Students for State Level Honors, and Elementary Word Master Challenge, All-State Band, Boys and Girls Golf, Boys and Girls Track and Field, Softball, Adapted Softball, and the Girls Ultimate Frisbee Team. Well done, students, and thank you to the staff and family members who supported the students along the way. Go Bears and roll the video.
Lots for us to be proud of. That's awesome. All right, we'll move into informational item C2, Superintendent's Report. Dr. Kazmicek.
Thank you Chair Ellison. I want to go back to the video. Marissa, correct me, was it 89 students recognized?
Yes.
Yes. Wow.
Eighty-nine.
That's really impressive.
Yeah, it was an impressive list. All right, congratulations to this year's graduates from the Transition Education Center, Area Learning Center, and White Bear Lake Area High School. Ceremonies last week that honored these students, ceremonies were held last week that honored these students while others and other schools and programs throughout the district celebrated the end of a successful school year. Well done, students. Thank you to our retirees who represent 596 years of service to the district. Later this week, we will honor our retirees in person with a Luncheon on the Lawn event. All retirees also receive Bear Awards and certificates to commemorate their time in the district. Thank you to all for your service to White Bear Lake Area Schools and to the community. Beginning this fall, one breakfast and one lunch per day will be free of charge for all students. Families were recently emailed information regarding remaining meal account funds, which will automatically roll over to the 23-24 school year to be available for à la carte purchases such as extra milk, bottles of water, extra meals, et cetera. As described in the email, families may also choose to donate the remaining balance to the school's donation fund, request a refund, or transfer the funds to a sibling. Free summer meals are available for kids and teens age 17 and younger. There is no enrollment and no cost. The healthy meals are based on USDA nutrition guidelines. Additional information is available on the district's website, ISD624.org. Juneteenth, June 19, was recently signed into law as a state holiday. In keeping with the new law, all White Bear Lake Area Schools buildings will be closed on June 19, 2023. There will be no classes or programs, school board meetings, activities, athletic camps, practices, competitions, or other school-associated events hosted by the district on this day. Individual schools and programs that had previously scheduled activities to occur that day have communicated with program registrants to provide additional information specific to their activity. Right, there will be opportunities to see district representation this summer at Marketfest, which runs Thursdays, June 15 through July 27 in downtown White Bear Lake. Stop by the district's booth on Third Street for pencils, bear paw tattoos, and conversation. You can also check out performances by the pep band on June 15 at the Third Street Stage and the drum line on June 29 at the gazebo stage. And last but not least, I am pleased to announce that Julian Stanky, who is here this evening, will be joining us on July 1 as principal of Birch Lake Elementary, a position that opened when current principal Jonathan Lucknick announced he would resign at the end of the school year. Stanky comes to the district from South St. Paul Public Schools, where he serves as assistant principal at South St. Paul Middle School. Prior to his current role, he held multiple positions in the district, including K6 Spanish teacher and student support specialist. So, welcome Julian. That's my report.
All right, thank you. Any questions for Dr. Kazmicek? All right. We will move into our discussion items. Discussion item D1, the radon testing results. Mr. Wald? And Mr. Rozier?
Good evening Chair Ellison, members of the board, Dr. Kazmicek. Radon testing is not required in Minnesota schools, but it's encouraged, and we think it's a pretty good idea to do that. We conducted testing this spring, and our Director of Building Operations, Dan Rozier, will give us a summary of the testing.
Good evening Chair Ellison, members of the board. Like Mr. Wald said, radon testing isn't required, but it is highly recommended by the Department of Health. So we last tested in 2018, so we decided to test again this spring. We used Atlas, our health safety consultant, to administer the testing, place the devices, pick up the devices, and send it to the lab for analysis. Part of the testing plan is also we report our results to the school board, which I'm doing tonight. I'm happy to say, like in 2018, all of our test results were well below any action levels set forth by the state. So, great results. I didn't include any reports in the packet, but if anyone would like to see a particular school report, I'd be happy to send it to them electronically. It's a lot of information. It shows every classroom that was tested, every result, every lab report. So, quite a bit of info, but it's all good info. So, if anybody wants to see those reports, give me a call or email. We didn't test North Campus. That was the only school we didn't test because of all the construction going on, but we plan on testing that as construction winds down next year.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Rozier? Oh, Ms. Boyd.
Is there an optimal time of year to do radon testing?
Yeah, there are certain months of the year. I think the state plan says, I think it's between December and March, so we tested between January and March. There is a, it's an optimal time where the buildings are closed up tight, where if you were going to get a bad result, it would be in the winter months when things are tightened up.
Any other questions? All right, thank you very much. Moving to our second discussion, item D2, the first reading of school board policies. Just to note that the first reading, these policies have come before the policy committee, and then they come to the school board for a first read where board members can offer any suggestions, and then they will come back before us again on July 10 for a second reading. So, first reading for 204, 205, 206, 207, 208, 209, and 525. Board members, if you have any comments or questions, please direct us to the page number in the packet so we can all be at the same page. Any questions or comments? Okay, these will come before us again at a subsequent board meeting for approval. With that, we'll move into our operational items. Operational item E1, Action on the Nutrition Services Milk Products Contract for School Year 23-24. Mr. Wald?
Thank you. Our contract with our current milk product supplier, St. Paul Beverage Solutions, had an option to extend it for one additional year, and the provider chose not to extend it, largely due to the increasing food costs that everyone is seeing. And so, we took bids for our milk provider, and St. Paul Beverage, again, won the bidding. There was a third company that bid, so we had St. Paul Beverage, Prairie Farms Dairy, and then one additional one who submitted an incomplete bid, and it was late. So it was really only two legitimate bids, and St. Paul Beverage won by about $110,000. So, we're happy to continue our service with them, and we're recommending that the board approve the contract with St. Paul Beverage Solutions for Nutrition Services Milk Products for the 23-24 school year in the amount of $245,829.50.
All right, you've heard the recommended action. Could I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
A motion by Ms. Strifogi and a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Newmaster. Any questions or comments?
I have a question.
Yeah, Dr. Arcand.
For the bid then, what's provided with that bid? Is that like a standard amount of product is produced, or are we purchased, or how does that work?
Yeah, so in terms of how much do we base the bid on?
Well, I mean, like, for the $245,000, is that how many units, or how is that determined?
It's based on, yeah, on the numbers of units of different types of milk that we order, and that she typically would use in a year. And so, those numbers, depending on how much our students consume, could change throughout the year.
So if we consume less, it may be lower?
We could be lower.
Okay, that's what I want to, thank you.
Dr. Newmaster?
I just wondered how the new system that might be, milk refills, does that fit in with this?
Yeah.
If it's in gallons, it's filled like Hardee's or something like that.
Yeah, right, and so, and you're referring to at South Campus where we had, students could get just a plastic cup and fill their cup and drink as much milk as they want. And milk consumption was, you know, high. Kids drink milk. We want kids drinking milk. So, as that program expands at some point, it's a little bit of a management piece. Those cartons are pretty clean, and they don't spill super easily. Plastic cups spill pretty quickly. So, pretty comfortable with our high school kids. Maybe not quite in middle school yet.
But that milk?
Is included.
Volume is included in this. And then you don't have the recyclables to deal with.
True.
And the kitchen has one more thing to wash.
True.
Any other comments or questions? Just a note, I was really interested to see which milk came up first as the favorite choice, that we definitely go through 1,500 gallons of chocolate milk in a year, as opposed to 250 gallons of 1% milk. So...
I'll admit, it's what I take.
I was going to say, I don't blame anybody for that.
Your pleasure.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. This will require a roll call vote. I would ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Strifogi?
Aye.
Thompson, aye. Arcand?
Aye.
Boyd?
Aye.
Daniels?
Aye.
Ellison?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
And the motion passes. Thank you. And then, again, Mr. Wald, we're going to move into Operational Item E2, Action on the Best Value Bid Award for High School Fine Arts Theater and Union Editions Audio-Visual Package.
Might be one of the longest titles of action.
Yes, it is.
Yeah, this is phase two and three of the High School Audio-Visual Package, and it's primarily the fine arts area and the union. And so, we use the best value procurement for this process, which we've used for other projects in the past. And our experience with AV is that it really matters, the quality of the installers. And so, we decided that best value would be the best approach here. And so, best value is different than low bid procurement in, it measures the value that a contractor brings to the project. And so, you measure not only the price that they bid the project at, but what type of talent and experience do they bring to the project? And so, we are recommending that we go with Video Services Incorporated, a total project bid of $986,220. Mr. Arcand, that's $164,000 below budget.
Thank you.
I recommend that the board accept the overall bid for the Best Value Bid Award for the High School Fine Arts Theater and Union Editions Audio-Visual Package as presented to Video Services Incorporated for the total amount of $986,220.
You've heard the recommended action. Could I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
A motion by Dr. Arcand and a second?
Second.
A second by Ms. Thompson. Any discussion or questions? Ms. Daniels?
When you say the video for the union, that's the cafeteria and the big space that is going to be, you know...
It's really that connecting space between the new and the old building serves as the cafeteria and is a large gathering space.
Yeah.
And so it'll have a sound system and some visual, large screen that'll come down in one area. So it'll be some multiple places within that 30,000 square foot space for presenting and performances.
Dr. Newmaster?
One question. I know we're getting a grand new theater in addition to our original theater that I know a lot of work was done on, not, I don't know, a decade ago maybe.
Yeah.
Is the original theater having additional improvements, or are we going to go with it as it is? Because it was good.
Yeah, it's in good shape, and we're going to continue to use that. It'll seat about half the capacity of the new theater.
The new theater is large.
It's large, yeah, and it's large enough to fit an entire grade level in, so we can have a class meeting in there, a class presentation, class assembly.
Other than shifting through lunch mods to get everybody.
Right, which can be really disruptive within a school day, for sure.
Great.
Boyd? What is the total capacity? So 700?
Eight forty-five.
Eight forty-five, okay.
Any further questions? We have a motion and a second, so this will require a roll call vote. I would ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Strifogi?
Aye.
Thompson, aye. Arcand?
Aye.
Boyd?
Aye.
Daniels?
Aye.
Ellison?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
And the motion passes. Thank you. Operational item E3, Action on the Fiscal Year 2022-23 Revised Nutrition Services Budget and Fiscal Year 2023-24 Preliminary Budget. Mr. Wald and Ms. Johnson?
And I'll turn this over to our Director of Finance, Andy Johnson.
Good evening. Tonight, we are going to be going through the preliminary budget for the upcoming school year. When we start our budget talks, we always come back to this budget cycle. So if you recall, in February, we presented the revised budget for the current school year, and at that time, we had a projection for next school year, which drove our budget adjustment process. That budget was built on assumptions based on what we were hearing from the legislature. Now we know what our funding is going to be for next school year, so at the May work session, we presented more in-depth what the budget is going to look like for next school year, and then this evening, I'll go over an abbreviated version of that presentation as well. So this is an updated graph that we like to make sure that we show as we're talking about budget, because it shows that the state funding has not kept pace with inflation over the last 20 years. So if you look at the blue line, that is what the state formula, per pupil formula, would be had it just maintained an increase according to inflation year over year. And then the dotted line is what the funding level has been per pupil, based on what the legislature has approved in each of their funding sessions. You can see that that gap just keeps widening, and they did have a historic increase in the formula allowance for this upcoming school year, but still, it's not keeping pace with inflation. The budgetary impact of this gap for our school district is over $10 million of additional revenue that we would have if that had just been tied to inflation over the last 20 years. Two really big assumptions that we're having that the budget is built on are our revenue and our enrollment. The formula allowance is increasing by 4% for next school year, and then 2% again for the following school year. After that, in the 25-26 school year, the formula increase is linked to inflation at a minimum of 2% and a maximum of 3%. So as long as inflation falls into that nice gap, then we'll be okay. Perhaps we'll have a really low inflation. We'll actually make some headway on that graph that we just showed, but we'll find out. The other key revenue assumption is the special education cost subsidy that had a nice increase for this upcoming school year. That'll be funded at about 44%. And then, our enrollment assumptions, so you can see that the budget is built on 8,301 students or adjusted daily membership. Our enrollment projections, assumptions are predicted based on our recent history, and schools across the nation had seen declines based on the COVID-19 pandemic. So those declines continue in our budget assumptions, but we continue to work with Teamworks International, a demographic consultant, and they're continuing to see some projected growth over the next decade. So we're hopeful that we're going to outperform these enrollment assumptions going forward. So then, putting into a graph, we'll look at both our revenues and our expenses. So here, this shows where our funds come from, and you can see down at the bottom, the vast majority of our funding does come from state sources. Just in the general education formula allowance, our state special ed is in the green. If you work your way up from the left, that's about 18%. Our federal sources is primarily related to Title I programming and special education programming. And then we have our property taxes, which includes both our referendum revenue and then as well as all of the different miscellaneous side sides that we have in our property taxes. And we have our LTFM, or Long-Term Facility Maintenance. We have revenue in and expenses out, so those two net to zero. And then a small amount of investment earnings, and then other, which would include like student activity fees, donations, miscellaneous revenue. So in total, for this upcoming school year, we have about $135,632,000 of general fund revenue. And then we'll look at our expenses in two different ways. So we have our salaries and benefits, and those two together total 79%. And then purchase services is our next highest spending category, and that includes our contracted transportation. And the bulk of our long-term facility maintenance expenses come into that category as well. And then supplies and materials, about 5% capital expenditures, about 1%. And then other, which includes like dues for, dues and memberships, and then some of our lease levy payments that we have related to the gyms that we have at Lake Garry's Matoska and Willow Lane that we funded through lease levy. Another way to look at our general fund expenses is to break it out by program or kind of by department area. So starting over on the right, you can see elementary and secondary instruction is the largest piece of this pie at about 40%. Our vocational education instruction would be like our career tech programs. Special education is about 22% of our total expenses. Instructional support services would include items like our technology program, our curriculum, our staff development. And then our pupil support services would include those areas like social work, school counselors, school sites. And then we have our transportation, about 8% of our expenses. Sites and buildings includes our operations department, our custodians. And then our long-term facility maintenance at that 4.3 million, which is what you saw two slides ago, we have revenue in and revenue and expenses out. And then other, just miscellaneous dues, that type of thing. Administration includes our building principals, our superintendent's office, our school board office. And then district support services would include all of our district center folks, so finance department, human resources, communications, production, enrollment office. So in total, our general fund budget is $133,033,000. So here we look at our fund balance summary. As you know, we have a school board policy that we need to maintain an 8% minimum fund balance and our unassigned fund balance. So just focus on the shaded column, the preliminary budget for the 23-24 school year. So as I said, our total revenues for next school year is predicted at over $135 million, and then expenses at $133 million. So we're projecting revenue over expenses for next school year of just shy of $2.6 million. That then rolls down into our ending fund balance at the bottom. That's the blue line. It puts us at an ending fund balance of $9,374,000. That puts us at 7% of our total expenses for next school year. And then if we go to the next column, you can see the projections for the 24-25 school year. And again, if we just focus on that blue line, our unassigned fund balance puts us at $11.1 million, which gets us just above our minimum 8% fund balance. And one thing to note that you don't see in this budget is the reductions that we were thinking we were going to have to make back in February. At that, we'd have about $900,000 of reductions, but luckily with the funding formula that was approved, we're no longer projecting that. We'll have to do that to get back to that 8% fund balance. Then we move on to the Nutritional Services, Community Services, and Debt Service Fund. On the Nutritional Services Fund, we're bringing forward another adjustment to the current year's budget, the 22-23 budget. At the time that we created the revised budget for nutrition services, they really had a whirlwind couple of years in response to COVID. You know, when they had free meals for all, and then this school year, they went back to paid meals. It was really difficult to predict where those revenues and expenses would come out for this year. And as we were doing additional work on the 22-23 budget, we really thought that the swing that we think is realistic for that fund was enough that it made sense to come back for another budget revision in that fund. So here, we're bringing forward an approval or approval request to revise the 22-23 budget for nutritional services. So you can see for this current 22-23 school year, we're projecting an ending fund balance of about $1.7 million, which is 28.2% of their total expenses. Then that rolls into the following school year. They are showing a deficit for the next school year of about $494,000, which brings our fund balance down to one point, just shy of 1.3 million, or 19.4%. There's a lot of assumptions built into that nutrition services budget. As we know, there's free meals for all, as Dr. Kazmicek had said earlier in his report. And so, we don't know exactly what that revenue per meal account or per meal amount is going to be yet. We just got a email from MDE today saying that's still to be determined, so there'll be some swings in that fund, I'm sure. Then in the Community Services Fund for next school year, they're projecting just about a flat budget, so $7.8 million of revenue and $7.8 million of expenses, so increasing their total fund balance by about $27,000. So they're projecting to end the year at $508,000, which is 6.5% of their total fund balance. And then debt service, that's the fund that we use to account for all of our bond payments, which for a school district is like your mortgage payments. So all of the debt that we have on our building facilities flows through the debt service fund. That revenue is just based on the projected or the calculated debt payments that are structured when we approve the debt. So MDE, the Minnesota Department of Ed... So MDE, the Minnesota Department of Ed, receives that, those debt payments from our investment advisor, and then just sets our levy accordingly. So next school year, that means that we'll have about $28 million of revenue, and then about $27 million of expenses. So that fund balance will increase by about $937,000 for an ending fund balance of 4.9 million, or 18.3%. And the Department of Education monitors that, and if that fund balance gets a little bit too high, then they issue a credit on the levy to reduce taxes in the future. So that's just set by the Department of Education. We don't have any discretion over that fund. So with that, the recommended action is to approve the fiscal year 2023, 2022, 2023 Nutrition Services Revised Budget and the fiscal year 2023, 2024 Preliminary Budget as presented.
You've heard the recommended action. Could I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
A motion by Ms. Bloyd and a second?
Second.
A second by Ms. Daniels. Any questions or discussion from Ms. Thompson? Dr. Arcand?
The question I have is, I know as soon as MDE sets our, what we receive for every breakfast and every lunch, that doesn't account for any type of inflation like we saw this year in our food costs. And so that could impact that also, correct?
Yeah, absolutely. And the other thing is, we don't know exactly what our participation is going to be. And so there's a lot of concern over what that reimbursement rate is going to be and to, you know, hope that it's going to be sufficient to cover our expenses. Luckily, we have a nice fund balance there. The reimbursement rate during COVID, when the federal government paid for all of our meals, that was higher than what we're going to see. So we're hopeful that it's going to be enough, but we're thankful that we have the fund balance that we do.
Daniels?
I was wondering if the new mandated unemployment for hourly employees kicks in this summer, if that will impact our budget at all, or how are we, at this point, we really don't know?
We don't know yet. We do have funds that are coming in to cover that. We don't know exactly how much. All we know is a big dollar amount that was approved statewide by the legislature. We've seen no guidance as to how much that will actually mean for White Bear Lake area schools. If we just project out how many kids we have in proportion to the state and calculate that times the allocation, we feel fairly confident that that will cover next year's unemployment expense, but we just don't know. So there's no expense built in because we think that that revenue stream is going to be enough. But yes.
And what about beyond that?
Huh?
Beyond that?
Beyond that, so there's an allocation that's supposed to be available to us for a couple of school years. And then after that, there is special education funding available for the unemployment costs for our special education folks. Any people outside of that, that would just be a general fund expense that we would not have any revenue for right now. It's specifically not allowed out of our levy, our property tax levy. Our unemployment costs historically have been allowed as a levy amount that we just levy after the fact, but it's that summer work is specifically not allowed for unemployment.
So the point is, for the next couple of years, we have, we think will be covered, but beyond that, we're not covered, and that will become a general fund expense.
Okay. And that is any hourly employees, so that is bus drivers, food service, paraprofessionals?
Yep, clerical.
Anybody that's not on salary?
Correct.
So, and we don't know, we just don't know how it's going to play out.
We have no, we don't, we don't know how many of those people will have, you know, just get a summer job, you know, and won't go for unemployment. There's a lot of unknown there.
Right.
Thank you. Dr. Newmaster?
Kind of playing off a couple of things that have been discussed. If we're looking at free meals for all, is that during the school year, or does that move over the summer like it did during COVID?
Yeah, it begins July 1st.
So there really is no layoff time, it sounds like, for kitchen staff?
Well, it's-
If they're going to have to prep all year?
We will have staff for sure for that summer programming, but the number of meals we serve over the summer is drastically less than what we do during the school year. And the way that the unemployment law works is if you don't offer very similar amount of hours and wage, then that would essentially not qualify as a like, like position, and then your staff would be eligible for unemployment. And so the number of hours for our summer folks is, it's considerably less. So our nutrition services staff, we think, will likely be eligible for unemployment. We can't say that, you know, that's unemployment's job to determine, but-
I just think the number of kids that will utilize the services is a complete unknown.
Yes, absolutely.
During the school year and in the summer.
Yep, yep, there's a lot of-
Delivery of those meals to pick up spots. I mean, there's a lot of unknowns.
Yes. Yep.
And is there any place, and I appreciate all the work and the clarification and the information, I mean, you guys do superior work. Is there anywhere it shows breakdown of types of mandated services, so you have an idea of what's mandated and what's choice? I mean, we do above and beyond for our kids in general, and I'm just wondering, is there any way to understand, or is that just more unknowns? Because they do have new things that are required in curriculum.
What area are you talking about?
Well, I'm thinking a lot of areas. I mean, if you have a new requirement for civics course, if you have X amount of services in spent or world language, English language learners, if you have, you know, different subject areas. So I'm just kind of curious, is there any idea of what they've mandated, how much that impacts what we do?
That's a big question.
It is, and there may be no answer. I'm looking at-
I don't, I don't know if there is an answer. Probably, there is an answer, but it would-
But it's convoluted.
Take us a long time to determine what's mandated and what's not, so.
I'm just thinking about all the complications of nutritional services. Thank you.
It's a good point, though, the issue of mandates. It's an issue. As more and more mandates become reality, funding typically doesn't keep pace with mandates. It's an age-old problem.
A crystal ball.
Yeah.
Ms. Bloyd?
If we have hourly employees that apply for unemployment over the summer, they, part of the unemployment laws, they still have to be actively looking for work, correct?
Correct.
I'm just wondering how many would choose to?
Yes, that, we've had multiple virtual meetings with people from DEED, and that question has come up, and the response has pretty much been, yep, we will continue to ask that question. But that's not us as employers, that's not our responsibility to monitor. That is the responsibility of DEED.
Well, Ms. Daniels?
And it just related to all that, is the district allowed to offer positions that aren't this in the same area? If you combined positions that equal whatever hours they were working before, but they were not similar positions, like, can you do that?
Yes, yes. So we can. We're, I think what we're going to see is districts are going to become creative in the positions that we create, because historically, you know, the paraprofessional positions that we have are shortened days, shortened, shortened hours per day, and shortened days per week. They did say that we could combine, say, a paraprofessional position with a summer cleaning type position. If the wage is similar and the total hours is similar, and that employee would choose to say, or, you know, may say, well, that's not a job that is a fit for me because of this. They would have to tell that to DEED, they'd have to explain why, and then DEED would decide if that's a legitimate qualification that would make them eligible for unemployment or not. So I think we'll, I think we will likely get kind of creative in the way that we're offering positions. I would say it's not a guarantee that it would be a disqualifier for somebody from unemployment.
Many require so much training. If you're a special ed paraprofessional, if you're a bus driver, I mean, all of it, you can't just offer it because it requires a skill level, or an interest, or an aptitude, or a amount of training.
Right, right. Yes, we're hiring people for these positions based on that position. You know, a paraprofessional may not be a fit for a summer custodial position. Yeah.
To be continued.
To be continued, indeed, yeah.
A question.
Oh, yeah. Dr. Arcand?
Just real quick, just let us know that you use the acronym DEED. Not everybody may know what that means. Can you tell me what it means?
Department of Economic and Employment Development, maybe?
Yes.
Great, thanks for asking that one.
All right, any further questions? All right, we have a motion and a second, so this will require a roll call vote. I would ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Strifogi?
Aye.
Thompson?
Aye.
Arcand?
Aye.
Bloyd?
Aye.
Daniels?
Aye.
Ellison?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
And the motion passes, thank you. Move into operational item E4, Action on Workers' Compensation Agreement for 2023/24. Mr. Wald?
Thank you, Chair Ellison, members of the board, Dr. Kasmicek. Annually, the board approves the proposed rates for workers' compensation. A renewal quote, there we go, renewal quote was received from the district's current workers' compensation carrier, Risk Administrative Services, RAS, that we've been working with them since 2014. And during that time, we've had really favorable rates and saved quite a bit on our workers' compensation program. We've had a reduction of three years in a row now, and this year, we're going to see a 5.5% increase. So part of that is our mod rate is increasing just a little bit, and part of it is that is your rates increase a little bit with, as your payroll goes up. And so our mod rate went, well, you can see in '21, '22, went from 0.97 to 0.79. And your mod rate is really the numerical rating that reflects the amount of claims experience you have compared to other, other school districts of similar size across the state. And so a mod rate below 1 means that you've had less claims experiences than other similar, similar-sized school districts across the state. Above 1 means you've had more. And so we've been working really hard with our operations team, and our HR department's done a really good job of processing claims and getting people back to work. And so we've seen now three years in a row, a mod rate below the state average. The increase is 5.5%, $429,255. But when you look back over where we were in, you know, 2015 through 2021, we've really, really done well with our workers' compensation. The recommendation is that the board accept the quote of $429,255 from Risk Administration Services for workers' compensation insurance effective July 1, 2023 through June 30, 2024.
You've heard the recommended action. Could I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
A motion by Ms. Daniels and a second?
Second.
A second by Ms. Strifogi. Any questions or comments? Ms. Daniels?
I know you said that we're doing a good job processing claims and so on. I also want to say that I think as a, historically, the district does a good job training people on how to reduce their risk to avoid having to file a claim. So that's part of the whole thing. It's not just processing, but it's, I know the district works hard at training people to be safe.
Yeah, how to file a claim, but also how to walk like a penguin, and how to, and it's our custodial, our custodial team making sure there's adequate salt on sidewalks, and that, you know, areas are safe, that they're performing their duties in a safe way, our nutrition services staff, our bus drivers, any of those types of positions that are really physical positions or where you're most apt to have injuries. And so really compliment those-
Or a teacher standing on a table to hang up something from the light fixture, for example. Not that they do that. They use-
No stand-up swivel chairs.
They don't do that anymore because they're so highly trained.
With rollers.
Any other questions? All right, we have a motion and a second, so this will require a roll call vote. I would ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Strifogi?
Aye.
Thompson?
Aye.
Arcand?
Aye.
Bloyd?
Aye.
Daniels?
Aye.
Ellison?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
And the motion passes, thank you. Move into, excuse me, operational item E5, Action on Property and Liability Insurance for 2023/24. Mr. Wald?
All right, we also bring the renewal rate for property liability insurance to the board each year. Recall that the school board, or school district is a member of MIST, which is the Minnesota Interscholastic Trust, and it's a pool of school districts or a group of school districts that pool their resources together to strengthen their purchasing power within the property liability space. And so since joining, joining MIST in 2014, 15, the district again is, has really saved significant funds in property liability insurance. But that being said, property insurance has been a really hard-hit industry over the last decade. I read that over the last decade, the industry has seen over $600 billion in catastrophic weather-related losses. And so as those claims are hitting the reinsurance market, then that gets spread across the country, and we all see the impact of that. So cyber, last year, we talked about cyber was up 41%. Many insurance companies were staying away from cyber. School districts are now a frequent victim of cyber crimes. And that, fortunately, after the big adjustment last year, cyber has stayed flat at, I think we saw, $8 increase, $46,000 approximately in cyber insurance, and it went up $8. So that's pretty good. The increase this year was really about the reappraisal of our properties. And so as a member of MIST, we're on a schedule for our properties to be reappraised, so we've benefited from maybe our properties being appraised lower than they maybe should have been compared to the MIST pool. Now we've been reappraised, and we're seeing a really significant jump of 44.1% increase in our appraised value. So that results in a 27.2% increase this year. And as you look over the years on this slide, you can see it's really been kind of wonky in that, in that property insurance industry over the last five, six years. The recommended action is that the board move to approve the property and casualty insurance package with the Minnesota Insurance Scholastic Trust in the amount of $671,531.38 effective July 1, 2023 through June 30, 2024.
You've heard the recommended action. Could I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
A motion by Ms. Thompson and a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Arcand. Any questions or comments? This will require a roll call vote. I would ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Strifogi?
Aye.
Thompson?
Aye.
Arcand?
Aye.
Bloyd?
Aye.
Daniels?
Aye.
Ellison?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
And the motion passes, thank you.
Thank you.
And Mr. Wald, you're off the hook now. Move into operational item E6, Action on Dissolution of Summer Academy Joint Powers Agreement. Dr. Kasmicek?
All right, thank you, Chair Ellison, members of the board. Though at a meeting in late May, Summer Academy member superintendents met and acted on a recommendation from the Summer Academy Executive Board that they had met earlier in May to dissolve the North Suburban Summer Academy. After many years of operation, they've determined that it's no longer feasible based on increased costs and lack of employment. So we're taking relatively swift action because this is, we want to wrap up the dissolution by the end of the fiscal year, which is June 30th, just a couple of weeks out, so. So all member districts are doing this in this tight window of a week or two, or one or two boards, and asking you to approve the dissolution of that joint powers agreement. So anyway, the recommendation is to move to dissolve the Summer Academy Joint Powers Agreement effective June 30, 2023.
You've heard the recommended action. Could I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
A motion by Dr. Arcand and a second?
Second.
A second by Ms. Strifogi. Any questions or comments? Ms. Daniels?
One, I know that we as a district and probably our surrounding districts offer so many enriched activities and courses and things like that for our kids, so that, I just want people to understand that by this dissolving, our kids aren't going to really, I don't, you know, they'll just have lots, they have lots of opportunities. And as you mentioned, people, our students were enrolling in this, in large numbers anyway, so-
Yeah, I think that's, that's a big factor, is that districts are offering more and more, and we offer more and more. And even the, in the conversations with other superintendents, talking about ramping up even more, the local offerings, or neighboring districts partnering and doing some programming. So I, I think there will be good things that'll come out of it, but this is a model that just probably ran its course.
Been around a long, long time.
Been around a long time, but it's no longer feasible.
Been around a long time, but it's no longer feasible.
Now, Dr. Newmaster?
Something similar that if you look at what we offer just in our district to the broad spectrum of all of our kits, there's, you know, enriched activities all summer to participate in. So it's, and during the school year with all the after-school things. We, for a while, there was no summer school supported by school districts or the state. So I think the summer is a, a good time for kids right now.
Other comments or questions? This is a voice vote. So all in favor of approving the recommended action, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. And the motion passes. And we'll move into our final operational item, Action on School Board Policies, five three five, six oh four, six oh eight, six two four, seven oh one point one, and seven oh nine. So these are coming before us as our second reading, and we usually like to approve them in one, one motion. So could I get a motion to approve the, a motion to take action on these school board policies? A motion by Ms. Thompson and a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Beloit. Any discussion? All in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. And the motion passes, thank you. And we'll move into the final item on our agenda, Board Forum. Board Forum is an opportunity for board members to talk about things that are happening in the district, things that they might be participating in, in the district, summer happenings that we should be aware of. So does anybody have anything that they want to share for Board Forum? Ms. Daniels?
Oh, I'm. Oh, okay. I just wanted to congratulate all the graduating seniors. And I wanted to mention too that some of our students have graduated from nine sixteen programs, and I was able to attend three of those graduation ceremonies, and, and those were just as exciting as our own. And of course, we don't have very many kids at nine sixteen, but the ones that are there, I mean, it was just, it was super exciting. Just, and I was happy to attend the large graduation in ALC and Tech. So that was great. And I also want to thank the retiring teachers this year for all of their hard work and wish them good luck and all the students to have a great summer.
Thank you. Dr. Arcand?
I just wanted to say that every time I have an opportunity to go to graduation and to see how much work and how well it, it flows, you cannot believe how much effort is put in by the teachers and the staff and everybody involved. It's just amazing to see that they get us all set up and they run it through and it goes through. And it's, and the students seem to enjoy it. So thanks for everybody who worked on that graduation. It was great and I enjoyed it. The other piece I want to say as, as a White Bear Lake alumni, thank you to those that are retiring. I know that I wouldn't be where I am today without teachers that were here when I was here. And I know that the students that these teachers have worked with, you know, they're prospering because of their work. So we really want to appreciate the time they, with all our students of our community. We thank you for that.
What else? Ms. Strifogi?
In addition to the graduations were amazing and the ALC graduation was also amazing. I'd also like to thank our teachers and our administrators here for a job well done this year. Thank you for everything that you've put in to making this year a good year. And I think things have gotten better and better over the last couple of years, getting back to normal.
Um, real quick, an, an update. So White Bear Lake School District belongs to one of the service cooperatives in the Twin Cities. And there's been a name change, which is really exciting. And so White Bear belongs to what was known as the Metro Exu. So there's the Exus in different parts of the state, different service cooperatives. And through a naming process, it's now called Brightworks. And there, with that name change, I think there's going to be, there's more branding and there's an, an opportunity to be more visible. But I just wanted to put that out there as the board member who serves on their board, that that's, if you see that word around Brightworks, then you'll know what that means. It's Metro Exu. And then I just wanted to put two more thanks out there, one to my fellow school board members. This is a lot of work and I appreciate all of you and all the time that you put in, extra time, into being on the board. And I wanted to thank the administration and the cabinet for all of the work that you put in that nobody sees a lot of the time. And then finally, to our parents. I was watching that, that graduation, thinking my first, my oldest is going to be doing, walking that stage in three years, and I just don't know how. You made it through, Wayne. Nope. So, yeah, so thank you to all the parents, all the time that you put in, be in taxis and all the other things, so. With that, I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
Charleston, move for an adjournment.
A motion by Dr. Arcand and a second. A second by Ms. Daniels. All in favor of adjournment, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. And we are adjourned.
Thank you.